A special hearing on a zoning request recommendation of the planning commission. This hearing is to consider an annexation by Bart Barak Sox Real Estate LLC, 5975-9-Dublin Road, Delaware, Ohio 43015. Representing Andrew and Barbara Dietrich, 1707 Asker Court, Wax Hall, North Carolina 28173. They are requesting an annexation of Logan County parcel numbers 08106-0000-009000 and 08106-0000-041000. Into the city of Belle Fountain be zoned R1, multi-family residence district. These 143.13 acres are located at the intersection of County Road 11 and Township Road 216. Just to clarify some confusion, the newspaper notice indicated R3. Planning Commission has only recommended annexation under R1. So with that, is there anybody here to speak on the issue?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to clarify, when you read the notice, you said R1, but then you said multi-family. Is it single-family?
R1.
Yeah, when you read it, I believe you said multi-family. But you did say R1, I just wanted to ask that the council take the recommendation of the planning commission and when it comes in to keep it R1 so we can have some planned and orderly growth out there. Thank you.
Do you have Howard's address number next?
No, but I can get it.
Tom Stevens, 600 East Lake Avenue. On the indication I got, and I work for the Belle Fountain Examiner, and you know I come down here and cover this for the last or most five months or so, and the indication we got from the city, it does say right here, it does not, that it's not coming in as an R1, it says R3, multi-family residence district.
That's an error. I thought I clarified that earlier.
Okay, okay, I just want to make sure that
Yep.
we're all, we publish the information that we receive.
Yep, I understand.
Thank you.
I will add for the record that the application was for an R3, multi-family. The planning commission's recommendation is an R1. That's a recommendation that ultimately, once the legislation for annexations before council, will be up for council to consider. If the petitioners were to come up and ask for it to be considered R3, it would take a supermajority vote of council to override the planning commission's R1 recommendation. But that notice that went out, it was corrected by Bonnie and sent out after the fact. I believe Bonnie sent an email, but it was late because she missed that, the recommendation was R1, single-family.
All right, I just wanted to make sure that we're, we don't want to report the wrong stuff.
Yep.
So, thank you.
Good evening, Bart Barrett Sox Real Estate, I'm the advocate on this. We are perfectly fine with R1, so with the meeting here, everything else. So we did file as R3, had a good conversation with the zoning board about R3 versus R1. Our plan is to bring it through as R1. So I just, we're not going to challenge F that or anything else. So we are perfectly fine with the R1 zone. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Steve Hager, 1353 Township Road 216. My question to the city council, what plans do you guys have for this annexation? We've got 216 as a bypass around Belle Fountain. Right now, we have people traveling on that road in excess of 60 mile an hour with hills and everything else. And it's a narrow, nasty road. In front of my house, in one day last winter, we had six accidents in an hour. So what is Belle Fountain's plan to bring this in? How are you going to defer that traffic around this area? If you're bringing in that number of houses, what is your plan? We haven't seen anything on your guys' side of what you're planning on doing. Thank you.
Hager.
Darlene Roell, 1385 Township Road 216.
I'm sorry, ma'am, what was your first name?
I'm sorry, ma'am?
What was your first name?
Darlene, D-A-R-L-E-N-E, last name R-O-L-L. 1385 Township Road 216.
Thank you.
We're on the east side of the road, which is Lake Township. The west side of the road is Harrison Township. Harrison currently has all the roadway and is the keeper of the roadway. Then down by the park, it's Belle Fountain City. And we're just really concerned with what the city of Belle Fountain and the people who live in Belle Fountain that don't know much about our area out there really are planning to do. We have a park that has no access to it unless you drive. Because as Steve said, we've been told that the speed limit is an average of more than 60 miles an hour on our road now. And last night at 9:00 PM on Route 216, which barely even has a berm, a semi made one of their normal daily trips. And that is a road that is not supposed to have those on it, semis on it. And it, it's a dangerous road. The whole area is dangerous, 11 and 16. We've had multiple accidents, multiple fatalities there. We have trouble down at the other end at Road 18 as well. Nothing gets better with it. As Steve said, in the winter, this last winter, we had seven wrecks or slide-offs in, within a three-house distance. And I've actually had, some of the sheriff's deputies have told me, they said, Darlene, if your road isn't the worst in the county for a township road, it's right up there above it. And so we're just really afraid that you want to do something to bring more housing into Belle Fountain. But the real thought is, what are you going to do to have an infrastructure to be able to even look at anything like a multiple housing unit? I mean, we've understood that it'll probably be 100 houses or more. And I told at the planning commission meeting that we actually had a person who rode his wheelchair from McDonald's all the way up Road 200, which is another horrible road, and all the way over to the park on Route 216. Because that was the only way he had to be able to go see his grandkids at the park. Because let's face it, we don't have a lot of public transportation either. So we just, our heart is for our area and not just for us. Our hearts are for the people who travel our road, for the people who want to be at the park, and people who want to get to different places. And I just really have to question, where's your heart right now? Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Ma'am, if I might, the gentleman who rode his wheelchair to the park, how did his grandkids get to the park?
I have no idea how they got to the park. But they were not with him. He and his wife were coming to see those kids play at the park. So I don't know how they got there. I'm assuming that the grandkids had vehicle to be able to bring them. But I don't know that.
Okay.
But thank you for asking.
Does anybody else in the audience seek to address council?
My name is Tom Moreland, I'm at 877 County Road 11. And I just wanted the council to know that my family farms the adjacent property on down County Road 11 with Beth Miller's place. And we're bringing farm equipment from West Liberty down to work those fields. So I want you to be aware that whatever happens along that road, we still need access to get that equipment through. It's already challenging, so could get more complex to get those combine, sprayers and all that stuff through. So, that's all.
Any other members of the audience seek to address council on the issue? Any comments from members of council? Any comments from administration? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion and second to adjourn this special hearing. Motion by Mr. Ailer. Second by Mrs. James.
And did you see for the one in Russia? Which is I keep down. I'll never forget, my niece has math today, her and my brother. And she says, this isn't what they taught us. And my brother said, this is how you're going to learn. So, that one, someone was the favorite one. Oh, this is, this is one.
That's why, that's why I think I'm going to be safe.
Okay. No one's newly, which is valid.
With a case like yours.
I thought you liked that.
They all have to text that to me.
I know.
That never leave our yard. And then, there was one street, and we needed to be hosed with a reasonable amount of time. And then we all knew we were going to go away. And my mom literally just walked the door off. And she was like, I just thought, and you're going to get dirty.
I remember one time, there's, there's 50 years behind my house that and we walked back into it and we were, it's hard from the house, we were lost. And guys, when we call the house, it's like a garage. You know that scene on Moonlight, or wherever, they're like rocking. I found, they're like I can tell you, it's terrible. They played, they turned the yard, they were speeding, they were getting scared out. I was like, seriously, I have a beach right here.
So, it's right there, but it's come on that train. And there's no way to get it down.
Yeah, two people brought in a ridiculous stupid I was mad about how they do it.
John is getting back from Jimmy Buffett cruise or something, or all painted up. Like Margarita. Where are you? Did you have a bunch of girls up there? Oh, probably the neighbors next to us. Oh, right next to us. Yeah. Yeah, they got a lot of young ones there. We didn't make it up last week.
Now, I left dogs out.
You had a good time.
The lawn people came up yesterday.
Belle Fountain City Council is now in session. Please rise to the invitation led by Councilman Springs, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Sorry, I'm late on the prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to serve our community, grant us wisdom, clarity and compassion as we make decisions that affect those lives of those around us and those we represent. May our discussion be guided by integrity and a shared commitment to the common good. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please proceed. Well, please call the roll.
Mr. Ailer?
Here.
Mrs. Baker?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick? Mrs. James?
Here.
Mr. Reeser?
Here.
Mr. Spring?
Here.
Mrs. Springs?
I make a motion that we approve the absence of Ms. Fitzpatrick.
Seconded by Mrs. James.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Spring?
Yes.
Mrs. Springs?
I make a motion that we I make a motion that we suspend the reading of the minutes.
Seconded by Mr. Ailer.
Mr. Ailer.
Yes.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. James.
Yes.
Mr. Reeser.
Yes.
Mr. Spring.
Yes.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, we'll move to administration reports. Mayor Chris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, council. Good evening, guests. Uh, council, just want to let you know it's less than three weeks where, uh, I'll be heading off to Japan to meet with leaders of the different businesses that we, Japanese businesses we have in the area. And then meeting with the mayor of our sister city in Suzuka, Japan. Been a long trip over, a long trip back, but I am looking forward to building the relationship that's been started many years ago with Bell Fountain. One thing on that, just to let you know, Suzuka gave us, gave Bell Fountain a pine tree to plant in front of the city building. I had just started in at the fire department. That pine tree died during a drought. We had to replace it. It replaced, it grew. I was on duty a night, a windstorm came through and blew that tree over. We don't have a pine tree there now. We've planted another one, but we still have a monument out in the front yard here commemorating that, that occasion. Uh, so it has been a long time that we've been in relationship with the, with Japan and the community there. Uh, second, I'd like to tell you that, uh, the administration is working, uh, with the company, Viewpoint. It's a public television, uh, program. We're working with them. Uh, they're doing a piece on this to, uh, promote Bell Fountain as a place to visit, start a business, and to live. Uh, this will be filmed in September and, but it'll be aired on many other TV stations. We're also going to be able to use the same footage on, with our own website and our own social media, but I just want to let you know that's coming up. And we're going to be promoting Bell Fountain to try to make it a better place for businesses to come and, uh, and, uh, people to come visit and live here in our community. And that'll end my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any comments or questions from Mayor? Seeing none, we'll move to service safety director, Mr. Dodd.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, council. Good evening, guests. A couple items for you. Council, I just want to talk to you about a couple ordinances that are on your agenda for tonight. Uh, the first one's twenty-five fifty-seven D. Uh, this is an ordinance that's, uh, authorizing request for statements qualifications for the performance of services that's our facilities master plan for the city. So this is kind of the fourth phase of our strategic planning process that we're going through, where we will actually have, uh, an architect slash engineering firm come in and look at our existing facilities and footprints and give us some recommendations on how we can, uh, most economically address, uh, some of the issues that we've got. Um, so we'll be doing that, uh, that'll be going out for bid, uh, or for qualifications hopefully this week. So we're going to ask for first and final on that tonight, which we approach finance about. Um, so we want to keep that moving. So as we move into twenty-twenty-six, uh, we can, we can have some concrete plans in place for how we need to grow. Uh, the other two, uh, ordinances are, your second reading, I talked about them at the last meeting, but just want to clarify because I've gotten lots of questions about it. Twenty-five fifty-one and twenty-five fifty-two on the authorized strength for the police and fire departments. We're not running out to hire nine more police officers and nine more firefighters. I, I know I talked about this at the last meeting, but just want to clarify it for, um, for the public and for you folks. That is simply increasing authorized strength so that we have the ability to offer jobs when we have the opportunity. It's so tough to hire, uh, in those, in that public safety sector right now. So, uh, you know, right now we've got twenty-seven of our thirty-one, a lot of spots filled in the police departments. We're not even filling the spots that we have. But occasionally, we do get a, uh, a cycle where we have multiple good candidates, but we don't have the openings to offer the positions. And if we don't, if we're not quick in offering those positions, they end up, um, being hired somewhere else. So, uh, again, it's, the immediate need is to give us the opportunity to hire when we have the opportunity to hire qualified candidates, especially lateral transfer candidates that we don't have to pay for training and, and time to do that. And then also the obvious need that we're going to have to grow as the community continues to grow around us with all the expanded housing that we've got. So, again, just to point a clarification, this does not mean we're going to start trying to hire nine additional in each of those apartments. Once that ordinance passes, it's just, uh, positioning us to be able to be flexible, uh, in the future. So, happy answering questions about those ordinances. Um, other than that, just want to thank, um, the, uh, organizers, the car shows, another great show downtown. Biggest one yet is my understanding. So, congratulations on that. Thanks for being downtown and bringing all those people to Bell Fountain. And then, uh, also kudos to the DVP and, uh, Ms. Stotler at the Chamber as the Downtown Director, uh, for a successful Taste of Bell Fountain event last week. So, continues to be a lot of great activities to enjoy, uh, in a trip, in Bell Fountain to attract people to the city. So appreciate everyone's efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Dodds. Any comments or questions for Mr. Dodds? Thank you. Before we move forward, just a reminder, members of the audience, of council safety regulation, number one, that prohibits the wearing of any headgear in council chambers. Thank you. Ball director, Mr. Stolling.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, council and guests. Um, two items. Uh, council, you had a seven o'clock hearing this evening on a proposed annexation. Um, planning commission has recommended that the annexation for the hundred and forty-three acres at the County Road eleven and Township Road two sixteen be zoned R one. Uh, you will see legislation at next council for that for first reading. Um, and the second item, um, this came from Mr. Reeser's Streets Committee. I do still owe legislation, uh, regarding the recommendation that the city would like to regulate. Um, what we've all seen in terms of electric scooters, bikes, et cetera. I keep running into roadblocks. It's really a timing and a manpower issue because the state of Ohio already has regulations on those. Um, the city of Bell Fountain has adopted and has a lot of the language regarding the classifications of electric bicycles. And so, it's just taking a lot of time just to craft city-specific legislation that doesn't run afoul of the state and or vice versa, um, to ultimately achieve the goal that, that was recommended from the Streets Committee regarding primarily the keeping clear of the downtown streets. Um, so that's forthcoming, but I just want to apologize, I haven't quite made it to your desk yet. That is my report.
Thank you, Mr. Stolling. Any comments or questions for Mr. Stolling? Seeing none, we'll move to orders report, Mr. Breitlinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, council and guests. Uh, just an update on our, uh, finance, our revenue, where we're at year-to-date. Uh, our income tax, we've collected, uh, roughly nine hundred, or five hundred and ninety-five thousand more than we did at this time last year. This is through the end of July. Uh, that's an increase of about seven point six percent. Along that line, we went now a twelve-month period with the increased income tax for parks. And this seven months period that just ended, they've collected just over a million dollars. Um, for the last thirteen years, it's like one point five million that the parks has collected to use for improvements. Along that line, general fund revenue as a whole is up about ten percent above our projections based on, uh, twenty-twenty-four's amounts. So, uh, we're in the right trend and it's all expected with all the new growth and the people moving in and, you know, paying income tax. So, that ends my report.
Thank you, Mr. Breitlinger. Any comments or questions for Mr. Breitlinger? Seeing none, we'll move to police chief, Chief Marlowe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, council. Yes. Um, just a couple of things this evening. Uh, one, kind of tack on what Service Structure Dodge is talking about with candidates. We held interviews last week, Thursday, Friday of seven candidates. Um, civil service will meet this Thursday to certify that list and the scores. I haven't seen them yet, uh, but once we have that, then we'll be able to move forward on some quality candidates. I hope we're, as he said, we're already three or four short. Um, and kind of to pile on, even if you did say run out and hire nine at the rate that we are hiring, it would probably take me three years. Um, but, um, just so you know, it's, it's, the tools are pretty thin when we do get them. And then the last thing is the chicken dinner is this Saturday. I know you've heard me talk about it a lot. You won't have to listen to me again for another year. Uh, but we're all but sold out. So it was very successful once again. Thanks for everyone's support. Um, and if you have tickets or want to stop down, appreciate seeing you. Now I end my report, Mr. President.
Chief, any comments or questions for the chief? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, engineer, Mr. Bischoff.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, no report.
Thank you, Mr. Bischoff. Um, let me see, economic development, Mr. Balraff.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, council, administration. Uh, since we're talking so much about growth, thought I'd share. The state of Ohio, uh, has been looking at population numbers for the state. And, uh, you probably recall from the twenty-twenty census, if it weren't for central Ohio, the state would have seen a pretty significant decline. Similar to Logan County, uh, if it weren't for Bell Fountain, uh, the county as a whole would have declined. The state realizes that we're in a spot where we need more people. And so they have set up through Jobs Ohio, which is our state economic development group. For the first time, they have a relocation incentive program that just launched. The Jobs Ohio relocation incentive program is designed to offer businesses that are tied to the, uh, Jobs Ohio's ten target industries. So think of, uh, life sciences, manufacturing, tech, R and D, logistics, distribution, uh, primary economic driver businesses. If you operate a business in that and you are recruiting STEM or technical talent from outside the state to Ohio, they will give you fifteen thousand dollars as a company, up to two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. So this is a pretty big deal, uh, something that I expect Logan County businesses will want to take advantage of. The idea is that, uh, let's say, they set a baseline. So let's say, uh, let's take a, a small manufacturer in, in Bell Fountain, IG Plastics. Let's say they recruited one out-of-state person last year. Uh, that's their baseline is one. If they recruits anything above that, so two people, that second person would give them a credit of fifteen thousand dollars. They can use that for relocation bonus. They can use it for housing allowance. They could use it for marketing campaign. Um, but the state is aggressively saying, we want more people. We need more people to support our drilling business and our drilling industry. I share that just to say the things that you all are doing, that you're supporting with single-family housing for, um, market rate, quality, nice, multifamily housing. Those, those are additive. That's part of the, um, the engine that makes it work. As Mr. Breitlinger shared, seeing income tax increases, uh, yes, wages do go up. Um, but largely that's going to be driven by new business, new industry, new residents coming in. So, excited to see Jobs Ohio launching that for the first time. Uh, the governor and the leadership there say, hey, this matters. We got to find a way to bring in more talent to our area. I think that's the same for us. Uh, we want to bring talented folks to our area, whether they're coming from out-of-state or from across the state. We want them living here. Living here, hopefully working in the area, but if they're living here, they're paying their income tax as well. And that's what helps fill those trails that connect a new neighborhood to our parks, um, or to our schools, this, this kind of thing. So, just want to share that with you. If you have a, uh, interest in learning more, if you have to, uh, send the link over to session, share that with us and pass it around. That's all I have to share. Thank you.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Balraff? Thank you, sir. Downtown director, Ms. Stotler.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I just wanted to come first say thank you, um, for everyone's support last week. There was a lot of things happening, a couple of street closures with, um, the different events. So just appreciate everyone that helped. Um, and I know, um, obviously that's a lot more on the city, uh, and all our, um, service safety. So I just appreciate everyone, um, and all that. I think we had a very successful week and always great to highlight all the great things we have in half of Logan County. So, um, I just wanted to report on a couple of events coming up in September. Uh, September sixth will be our tailgate takeover. So this will be happening on West and East Chillicothe. We will be just closing West Chillicothe from, um, right before Main Street. And then, um, it will, we'll keep obviously Detroit over, open, but then we'll have, um, by Roundhouse as well because they're supporting with that event. So, um, that will be the only street closure for September. And then we do have another event on Saturday, September twelfth as well, uh, our twentieth, I apologize. Um, and that will be a fall in love event with Bell Fountain. So, um, just no street closures there, but, um, we encourage people to go into businesses. And then I did just want to let you all know on a personal note, um, and at the end of October, I will be leaving my position with the DVP. Um, just choosing a new career path. I love event planning and I love this community. So hopefully my next step is keeping this here for September. So I have.
Thank you, Ms. Stoller. Any comments or questions for Ms. Stoller? Thank you. Now that concludes our administration reports. We'll now move to reports from standing committees, finance committee, Mr. Springs.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two ordinances for first reading tonight. Ordinance twenty-five fifty-four is supplemental appropriation for the police department will be, uh, purchasing a drone for a cost of roughly thirty thousand dollars. And then twenty-five fifty-seven D, Mr. Dodds has already explained that's going to allow us to go out and seek qualifications to complete a facilities master plan. We have two ordinances for second reading. Twenty-five forty-nine A will be asking for second and final reading on that. Uh, that's making supplemental appropriations for the court. And they're running low, so they asked us to, um, pass that on second and final. And then also, um, twenty-five fifty B will just be for second reading only. And that's our donation or gift to the Logan County Animal Shelter. And then we have one reading for third and final, which is going to be twenty-five forty-six A. And that is just changing around the ordinance that we did twenty-four thirty-two. We're taking improvements. It's for the new fire track, but we borrowed the money from another funding we had. Switched around and made a clarification there. That concludes our report for finding.
Thank you, Mr. Springs.
Oh, that one, which one?
Sorry.
Twenty-five fifty-seven. Did you say?
Twenty-five fifty-seven will be first and final. Yes.
Twenty-five fifty-seven, first and final. Okay, thank you. Uh, rules, ready, Mrs. James?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a few things on the agenda tonight. Uh, twenty-five fifty-five B is the annual ordinance to, um, annex and place the crackback ordinance pages. That's just to align our, um, ordinances with the Ohio revise code. We also have twenty-five fifty-six C, which is an, um, intent to provide services should we annex the property for, uh, Gary Alexander. That's two point four nine four acres. It's not accepting the annexation. It's just agreeing to provide services should we accept that. And then we have twenty-five forty-seven B. This is not the property for tonight's annexation hearing. This is the third vote on this annexation of the property near Michigan and Lutho, and it will be zoned R one. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Uh, safety committee, Mr. Reeser.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, we have two ordinances for second reading. Those are the ones, uh, Mr. Dodds referenced earlier, the twenty-five fifty-one, twenty-five fifty-two, uh, authorizing the service safety director and fire chief to take the necessary actions for hiring of said new fire, uh, firefighter paramedics. And the same thing with police department with the chief of police and so, uh, chief of fire. Um, and that ends my report.
Thank you, Mr. Reeser. Utilities committee, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two ordinances on the agenda this evening. The first is twenty-five fifty-eight, which is an ordinance that authorizes the, uh, city service safety director to enter an agreement, um, an emergency repair agreement with LeVance Excavating, um, regarding a ruptured stormwater line under Candy Street. That one will be asking for first only. Um, for second reading only is twenty-five fifty-three, um, which is an ordinance amending the, um, franchise agreement with Logan County Co-op, um, to make that an open, uh, franchise agreement. Um, that'll be, uh, second reading only. Um, and then, uh, we will be meeting as a committee, um, on next Wednesday, August twentieth at eight thirty AM here in council chambers, um, to continue discussions on our trash program, uh, water rates, and any other, um, business that comes before the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Uh, streets committee, Mr. Ailer.
Yeah, we have, uh, one, uh, ordinance set for adoption this evening, twenty-five forty-eight. It's the east-west public alleyway there, uh, by Agent.
Thank you, Mr. Ailer. Does that conclude your report?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Sidewalks, curbs, and parks committee and Mrs. Fitzpatrick's absence, Ms. Baker.
No report.
Thank you, Mrs. Baker. And then back to you for audit committee.
Um, I have no report for audit, uh, committee as well, but, um, I do want to make a, just a short, uh, note. I attended the Senior Services Coalition meeting, um, this past. I attended the senior services coalition meeting this past month. I'm the senior center representative. I think that might be saying something that, I got the message, but that's okay. The, I have a, I brought back a little thing. There's now some transportation that is available through the county. There's some limited rules and it's a kind of a path around through the city. This flyer tells you where the stops are, where people can go to catch on, to be able to get places to shop and things like that, that picked up at the library and some of the senior areas and then some of the local grocery stores and shopping areas. So that's something new. They're looking to actually expand that also to the lake. Might be called loop around the lake, but this one is called Introduce in Belle Hop. So I just brought a few of those. I passed those out at that meeting. So that ends my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Baker. Thank you for that information. Well, that concludes the reports of standing committees. We'll now move to the portion of our meeting where we welcome communications from citizens. If there are any members of the audience who seek to address council, please approach the lectern, state your name and address, after which the chair will recognize you for up to five minutes to speak. Is there anybody in the audience who seeks to address council? Seeing no one approach the lectern, that will conclude a portion of our meeting reserved for communications from citizens. We'll now move to our legislative agenda. Mercy police is hot in here with ordinances and resolutions for first reading.
On reading fast. An ordinance making supplemental appropriations and amending the permanent appropriations ordinance for purposes of Belle Fountain Police Department and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Springs.
Motion to pass on first reading only.
Seconded by Mrs. Baker.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Springs?
Yes.
An ordinance to approve, adopt, and enact the 2025 replacement pages to the codified ordinances and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. James.
Motion to pass on first reading only.
Seconded by Mr. Springs.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Springs?
Yes.
A resolution by the Council of the City of Belle Fountain, Ohio, declaring its intention to provide services to certain territory to be annexed to the city of Belle Fountain, Ohio, containing 2.494 acres in Jefferson Township of Logan County, Ohio, and said land owned by Gary L. Alexander Jr. and adjacent to the city of Belle Fountain, Ohio.
Mrs. James.
Motion to adopt.
Seconded by Mr. Springs.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Springs?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the service safety director to advertise for requests for statements of qualifications for the performance of services necessary to complete a facilities master plan and declaring an emergency in the city of Belle Fountain, Ohio.
Mr. Springs. Motion to waive the three reading rule. Seconded by Mr. Reeser.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Springs?
Yes.
Mr. Springs.
Motion to pass on first and final.
Seconded by Mr. Reeser.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Springs?
Yes.
Mr. Springs. Motion to adopt, seconded by Mr. Reeser.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Springs?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the service safety director on behalf of the city of Belle Fountain to enter into an emergency repair agreement with Levans Excavating Incorporated regarding a ruptured stormwater line under Canby Street and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Davis.
Motion to pass on first reading only.
Seconded by Mr. Ailer.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Springs?
Yes.
That concludes our ordinances and resolutions for first reading. We'll move to ordinances for second reading.
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations and amending the permanent appropriations ordinance for purposes of municipal court and Maryburg Town Hospital Endowment Special Projects and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Springs. Motion to waive the three reading rule. Seconded by Mrs. Baker.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Springs?
Yes.
Mr. Springs. Motion to pass on second and final. Seconded by Mrs. Baker.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
And Mr. Springs?
Yes.
Mr. Springs. Motion to adopt, seconded by Mrs. Baker.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Springs?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the city auditor to appropriate funds for a contribution to the Logan County Animal Shelter and declaring an emergency in the city of Belle Fountain, Ohio.
Mr. Springs.
Motion to pass on second reading only.
Seconded by Mr. Reeser.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Springs?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing and creating nine new firefighter, paramedic positions in the Belle Fountain Fire Department and authorizing the service safety director and fire chief to take the necessary action for the hiring of said new firefighter, paramedics.
Mr. Reeser.
Motion to pass on second reading only.
Seconded by Mr. Davis.